On the motion, Chairman Anna Alfera.
Aye.
Close, no more. Under new business, case number sixteen oh three eight, New Creek LLC for special permits to construct a drive-through window in the Dunkin' Donuts business five fifty Adams Street. Depp and their representative here, councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm caught on guard because usually when I'm on first, he kicked me to the end of the list, so.
But, I just figured you get paid more than I would.
Maybe I said I think I might set out the, uh, exactly how you thought. Uh, thank you, Chairman, members of the zoning board. For the record, my name is Evan Fleming up here on behalf of New Creek LLC. With me tonight is Chris O'Mello of Kimco, who is the owner, representative, representative here tonight. New Creek LLC was the entity in the state title to this particular retail plaza, as it did in other plazas as well. I'm also joined by Vinod Kalakiri, and also Joyce Lee Mayer, both from BHB. Vinod will talk about the traffic-related matters in more detail today, the analysis of the parking, and the analysis of the queue, in both preparation of the plans that are being presented tonight, and also in response to concerns that were raised by the city councilor, as this board may see, and other neighbors in the area. Just, if I may, take a couple of minutes to give you a little bit of background. I'm sure that you're very familiar with the site. The site is located at five fifty Hancock Street, otherwise known as the Adams Plaza, or if you want to call it the Walgreens Plaza, which is located on Adams Street. It's a two thousand, it's a two point six six acre parcel of land. It's improved by a commercial retail plaza, which consists of five retail businesses now, including the Walgreens Farm Pharmacy, which is the largest tenant in the building, NSYNC Studio for the Arts, formerly Unchained Pizza, and the UPS Store, as well as the Dunkin' Donuts facility. Dunkin' Donuts operated from the facility for a number of years without a drive-through, as this board is probably well aware. The property is located in a business, the zoning district, so the retail use of this particular location is allowed by Brighton. What brings us here tonight is a request for a special permit for drive-through. A number of years ago, the city council felt as though there needed to be a level of review for any drive-through proposals, even though retail businesses were allowed as a matter of right, and they put in, as part of the ordinance that the zoning board repeals, would be the special permit granting authority for all drive-through facilities. And that included the TD Bank next door and any other facilities that maintain the drive-through. As you are well aware as well, during the winter of two thousand fifteen, in our wonderful snowstorms that we suffered through day after day after day, this building suffered from that as well, and the accumulation of snow on the roof of the building caused a portion of the buildings to collapse. And that housed, at the time, the UPS Store, the Unchained Pizza, and the Dunkin' Donuts facility, and that three-unit addition to the plaza on the Walgreens side. Kimco then was in the process of rebuilding that through insurance claims and other things, and has now rebuilt that section of the plaza. And in doing so, they began discussions with the tenants about the reuse of some of those sites, and approached Dunkin' Donuts about interest in moving to a different location within that three-street plaza. Normally, the UPS Store, as you probably know, was located closest to NSYNC Studio for the Arts. Dunkin' Donuts was located in the middle facility, and then Unchained Pizza was on the end cap. And in discussions with the tenants, it was understood and agreed that Dunkin' Donuts would move to the end cap unit. And it gave, the collapse of the building and the rebuild gave a perfect opportunity to look at maybe a better way to utilize that facility, and that hence led to the negotiations of the drive-through facility for that location. So that's what brings us here tonight. The parking lot, by the way, has approximately one hundred and twenty-nine vehicles, and I've visited that plaza a number of times, as many of you probably do as well, and very rarely as ever have I ever seen that park, many of those spaces being utilized. And Vinod will talk about the analysis that was done on the use of the parking lot, because quite frankly, it's quite, it's overparked at one hundred and twenty-nine units, one hundred and twenty-nine vehicles, and this will be some modifications to the parking lot as part of the plan. So the petitioner is requesting a special permit from this board in accordance with Title seventeen, Section nine point four, to permit the construction of a drive-through window to serve the Dunkin' Donuts building, which will be moved to the end cap retail unit. The parking lot, as such, will be redesigned, but not rebuilt, redesigned as it services that particular unit at the end. Much of that parking was very underutilized, in fact, not used at all oftentimes, because it's furthest away from the retail users. That, in redesigning the parking lot, that section of the building, or at the end cap unit, will be, parking lot, will be redesigned and designated as employee parking only. So all the employees from the plaza will be required to park in that location, which is furthest away from the retail units, so, and so that the remaining portion of the parking lot remains free and available to the customers of the remaining users. We went through a number of different discussions with the city in designing the drive-through queue, and the drive-through as it stands today. And those discussions included meetings with Mr. Duca, meetings and discussions with the city's traffic engineer, meetings and discussions with the former planning director, Dennis Harrington, and during those discussions, a number of different options were reviewed. Vinod will talk about one of the, two of the, oh, two of the options. One, the present option that we're going to discuss tonight, or proposing tonight, and another option that was, that we decided not to move forward with, and he'll explain why. There were a couple of different ways to use, to house a drive-through, however, and those are fully explored. The whole purpose of those discussions and the analysis was to ensure that there would be no impact of backup onto Adams Street or into the driveway of the plaza, so that it would provide the longest queue possible for the drive-through, and there would be no interference with the use of the plaza parking lot, and no backup or disturbance to Adams Street, which is a busy street during the morning hours and evening hours, and no backup into the entryway. In that new parking area, there will be signage provided that requires that those spaces be utilized by employees and employees only, and the remaining areas will, and there will be signage in that separated parking lot. As I indicated, there was a past preview that Vinod will talk about, about the use of the driveway parking, of the parking lot itself. Although this has an impact on the number of spaces that will be provided in the entire parking lot, it's a minimal impact that Vinod will talk about, and still will provide adequate, or even more than adequate parking for the plaza as it stands today. As I indicated, this was reviewed by the city's traffic engineer, Debbie Finnegan, who provided what was the comment letter. Vinod and his team reviewed the comment letter, made some changes, responded to some questions that she raised, and we believe that the proposal as is being presented tonight will adequately address the concerns that were raised. After filing, we, and by the way, I reached out to Council of Palmucci a number of months ago, and we talked about the possibility of an neighborhood meeting. It was decided that an neighborhood meeting was not going to be held, so we did not have an neighborhood meeting. And I did note, and as I received from Noreen, the letter from Council of Palmucci, and letters from a couple of neighbors in the area, raising concerns primarily about the additional traffic and the backup of the queue onto the Adams Street intersection. And interestingly, Council of Palmucci raised two different sites in Quincy, Dunkin' Donuts sites at that. One was the Franklin Street Dunkin' Donuts, and the second was the Center Street Dunkin' Donuts, which I think we all know are probably the two worst drive-through situations at Dunkin' Donuts in the city of Quincy. And so what we asked Vinod to do, and he did, is he went out and reviewed those particular sites, and he'll speak to those as well, about the average queue that exists in those Dunkin' Donuts facilities, and the problems that occur at those facilities and why, which are far different than the existing conditions of this site, as the site provides adequate land within the parking lot itself, but also within the queue that we're proposing tonight. So, without anything more from me, although I'm here to answer any questions and concerns, I'd like Vinod to make a presentation on the traffic-related.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Vinod Kalakiri. I'm a traffic engineer with BHB. I'm a professional engineer, licensed professional traffic operations engineer with over twenty years of experience, licensed practice, traffic and transportation engineering, and planning in Massachusetts.
Address?
I'm with BHB. The address is one oh one Wallenex Street, Watertown, five six, zero two four seven one. So as Ed introduced the project, he mentioned that you've been looking at this from a traffic flow and operate. BHB has been doing the site civil design on the project, landscape design, as well as traffic analysis for the project for quite some time. In fact, I've been looking at this site for more than a year at this point. After the roof collapse and deliberations started on how best to reconstruct and utilize the plaza, BHB was brought in. There were some iterations of site layout that were done before BHB got involved, and those were reviewed with some of the planning staff in the city. And the feedback from that process was that there was a need for a traffic engineer to be on the team, so that, you know, we could review the operations and the impacts of the proposal, and that's how BHB originally got involved. As Ed mentioned, we're talking about Adams Plaza. That's part of the Adams Street, as you know, that's Adams Street heading towards ninety-three in that direction. That's Furnace for Parkway, right there. It's a signalized intersection. There's the TD Bank located right there. I remember current conditions, and before the roof collapsed, Walgreens was right there, and then the other, and it's the dance studio, the UPS Store, the Dunkin' Donuts in the middle, and then the pizza store on the end cap. So that was the existing layout, with approximately one hundred and twenty-nine parking spaces within the plaza. So that's the existing current conditions. The site is served by a single curb pad, as you can see, one lane to entry, one lane exit. It's a pretty wide driveway, it's over thirty feet wide, but it's striped and signed to operate as a single lane in each direction. On Adams Street, there's essentially for through traffic, there's one lane, this is essentially, not this kind of pointing in that direction, right in the middle of Furnace for Parkway and Adams Street. So I would call Adams Street as generally eastbound in that direction, heading towards the signal, and heading towards ninety-three will be westbound Adams Street. So the eastbound Adams Street approach has one lane with a wide shoulder, bicycle lane that's been striped, and then the westbound has one through lane varying with bicycle lane on the right side, and a left turn pocket, a left turn lane that provides access to Adams Plaza. A few years ago, that was not the configuration. The left turn lane did not exist. There were multiple lanes on Adams Street, and that was causing a lot of conditions, speeding issues, things of the nature. And my understanding, talking to some of the city staff, was that that was modified, the lane configuration was modified to help reduce speeds, and also promote multimodal transportation, bicycles and pedestrian activities. So you have one lane in each direction, and a left turn pocket entering the site. There's only one curb pad for the plaza, it's located right there. That's the driveway for the TD Bank. And I'll get into a lot more detail with this plan, but this is sort of an overview of the proposal. As Ed mentioned, the parking lot here will be reconfigured, the existing parking lot. It's just wide open parking lot, you come in and make a left turn immediately into this parking lot. This area, when Dunkin' Donuts was still in operation, was quite often used for staging delivery vehicles. Small box trucks would park there, and then supplies would be carried to the stores. This area, not usually getting utilized, the parking right in front of Walgreens, right in this area is usually the prime parking within the plaza. Again, the proposal is modify the layout right there. Majority of the parking lot remaining, plaza parking lot, will remain the same. The parking here will be reconfigured, a tri- through lane added, and then there are some lane changes that are proposed on the driveway. And again, I'll get into a lot of the specifics on some of that, the graphics, but the key element here is that the drive-through lane would pass through an employee-only parking lot. So this area of the parking here will be designated for employees only, navigate details of why that is. Again, this has evolved, this plan has evolved over the last year, year and a few months that I've been involved in, looked at various iterations, worked with city staff preliminarily to ensure that the design accommodates, addresses the comments that we have heard as we go through the process. Just to give you a brief overview of the traffic study itself, the May two thousand sixteen study that's been included as part of the application, I would kind of break it into essentially three buckets of information. You have an existing conditions review, where you see a lot of data, traffic counts, speeds, parking supply, crash errors, sightlines, queuing information. So there's a lot of data about what's happening out there today. There's also information about the roadway geometry, the lane configuration, how many lanes you have, past gear constraints, things of that nature. The second aspect of the study deals with an analysis of those conditions. So given those parameters of volumes, crashes, sightlines, queuing that exist today, how does the roadway system work, and how does the plaza work in relation to those traffic metrics in the area? So that's our second condition. And then, within that second bucket of information, if you would, we look at two scenarios. There's an analysis without the drive-through, which is essentially a, you know, a by-rank condition, if you would, because if nothing were to happen, you would have a Dunkin' Donuts without a drive-through. And then there is the proposal, which is the Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through. So there's two sets, this act essentially, a three-set analysis. The current conditions with no Dunkin' Donuts, a condition in the future with, without a drive-through, but with a regular Dunkin', a walking Dunkin' Donuts. And then third scenario, which is analysis of Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through. And then the last set of analysis, which towards the end of the document, you will see a lot of information about parking analysis, drive-through operations, and how we incorporate all that information into the site layout that's presented on the plan. This is a zoom-in, zoom-in view of existing conditions and existing access there, and then the surface parking lot on this end, which is primarily the area that would be modified as part of this plan, one hundred and twenty-nine parking spaces. Again, the plan would be to modify the parking here. In total, the one hundred and twenty-nine parking spaces would be eliminating, this plan involves an elimination of about thirteen parking spaces, so there will be a total of about one hundred and sixteen spaces after this improvement is implemented, with about eighteen spaces located within this area that's going to begin designated as an employee parking lot. Obviously, employees can park in other areas of parking lot farther away from the stores, but this area would be designated as an employee-only parking lot, with the primary goal of producing the turnover. So if you had active customer parking in there with cars pulling in and out of those spaces, a concern we had heard from the city staff was how would the drive-through operations work if cars primarily pulling in and out. So, again, given that it's eighteen spaces and well-defined design and monitoring and control, we've decided to designate that as an employee parking space, parking lot. So the turnover of those spaces would be substantially lower. Employees would come in, park, and then they would stay there for that type of shift. And when you look at, and from the point of view of Dunkin' Donuts, the peak time for Dunkin' Donuts, as you imagine, is early in the morning. So our traffic counts, we looked at three sets of data, we looked at early morning peak time, so six AM to nine AM, which is typically where you see the majority of the operations associated with Dunkin' Donuts. We also looked at the evening peak time, which is a peak that corresponds to the peak of the entire plaza. So the Dunkin' Donuts itself would not have as much traffic as the morning peak time would, but then the rest of the plaza would be in operation, Walgreens, and into the other stores, pieces of these, the dance studio. So we looked at an evening peak time. And then from a parking and circulation point of view, we also looked at a Saturday midday commission, because a Saturday would be a peak time for parking. So we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we had, we looked at parking operations on a Saturday midday during the peak time, so that any change or detection in parking is not going to seriously impact operations of the plaza. So one of the key things that Ed mentioned, that's come out even during some of the early comment letters that we have received, was about the impact of the drive-through queue and what it does to the operations of the plaza, what it might do to the operations of Adams Street. That was, I would say, the first and foremost item that we looked at as part of the analysis we looked at early on, about, let's say, fourteen months ago, when we started looking at the design. But based on the feedback that Center Street and Franklin Street were two kind of direct through operations in the city, and kind of how do those two locations operate now, what happens with the queues with the drive-through operations, and how that might correlate to what we have planned here. So we looked at both locations. This little map that you see here is the Center Street Dunkin' Donuts, right there, that's Center Street, that's the group three interchange, the train station, that's the Alboline car service place that you see there with the red roof. And then here, right here, is the Franklin Street Dunkin' Donuts, Franklin Street heading essentially north-south, with the drive-through lane that goes around, drive-through windows on this side. As you can see, the stacking here is much longer than the stacking that's available at the Center Street Dunkin' Donuts. This site currently has capacity for about four to five cars for the stacking, before those cars spill back onto Center Street. And again, we have observed, based on our monitoring, we have engineers out there during those morning peak times, to observe the queues, and very frequently, those five car queues are exceeded. And you see queuing on Center Street, you see queuing on Franklin Street, and quite often, people get frustrated when they see the queues filling up inside, they can't get into the parking lot, and they end up parking on the street, just running that path here. And we have monitored the queues, how many people actually park on the street and run into the store just because they can't get into a parking lot after the sake of convenience. Typically, from a traffic engineering point of view, when you look at drive-through operations for Dunkin' Donuts, and it's closely tied into the operation, operations, the processing speed of the facility itself, so Dunkin' Donuts has certain parameters on how quickly they can process, how they should process customers as they travel to the drive, there are certain metrics. So that defines the processing speed of the window. So independent of the volume of traffic that you have in the area, it's constrained by the number of cars the people in the store can process, and that's all standardized the way Dunkin' Donuts operates, and how their flow plan is laid out, and how their model works. And typically, on an average, you see an average queue ranging somewhere in the order of nine to ten cars. If you are looking at an extended period of time, and you monitor all the queues, and you take an average of all those queues, it's about nine to ten cars. The maximum queues typically from a design point of view would be somewhere in the order of thirteen cars. That's what you typically expect to see at a Dunkin' Donuts drive. Again, that is controlled from that point by the processing speed at the window, and also the amount of time customers are expected to wait. You know, if you are sitting in a queue that's longer than thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen cars, you're not going to add to the back of the queue, you're going to, as you may hear, as Franklin Street would park on the street, if you can't get into the lot and walk into the store. After a certain point, customers would choose to just park and walk into the store rather than add to a thirteen or fourteen car queue. So typically, you would see the maximum queues in the order of about thirteen cars. I know this is a lot of data, but the intent of this graphic, again, this is the queue measurements at Franklin Street, these are the queue measurements at Center Street. The bottom axis represents seven AM to nine AM. The peak time generally for this area is somewhere between seven fifteen, seven thirty, for about an hour or so, when you see the peaks spicing traffic toward one. And then the number on the Y-axis represents the number of cars in the queue. And you see that on Franklin Street is definitely spiking traffic just around that eight AM timeframe, and then it kind of peers out towards the end of the observation period. Again, the queues down at the end are about four to six. The maximum in this case, in a couple of instances, gets up to sixteen cars. And then our staff actually observed that people were just parking on the street, they're walking in because they can't sit in those queues for too long. At Center Street, you see that there are actually a series of spikes in the curve, and this is likely tied to the train schedule, right in the store. So they have a train station, people trying to stop by, grab a coffee before they go and park at the station and grab the train. And you see that there's one instance where the queue gets up to fourteen cars. There are only five cars maybe that you can stack in the parking lot before the queues fill out, and additional nine to ten cars that people see as they're driving through that area. And yes, that is, that is an issue when you have a drive-through that's social. From a design point of view, when you have this much data to work with, you look at a metric called the eighty-fifty percentile, it's a statistical number that's used for design purposes when you deal with traffic engineering. And based on the Franklin Street drive-through numbers, eighty-fifty percentile number is about fourteen cars, that's what you would use for design purposes. If you were based on Center Street number, you'd base it on a statistical design number of about eleven cars. We are using a design queue of thirteen cars on the plan. And I won't point out one thing, so what thirteen cars means. Thirteen cars is toward that point, so if you start stacking cars right from there as they enter the employee parking lot, and they wrap it around to here, come up to the window, that's thirteen cars. And you have an additional six to seven cars outside within the plaza itself, so which is about twenty cars before you actually go out on the path. So there's more than adequate stacking within the plaza to accommodate any of those peak queues that you would expect. And in general, again, after about thirteen or fourteen cars, you would tend to see people park in the spaces and just walk into the street, not necessarily sit in a queue that's longer and wait for three minutes or longer, waiting to process. So early on, before BHB got involved, there was a proposal that was put in front of the planning staff, and the design intent, this is a sketch of that graphic, that showed a drive-through lane that cuts in right after you come in from the entrance. So you would come in to the plaza, and then you turn into this parking area, and then get into the drive-through lane, and then you exit. This here is thirteen cars. And the concern that was expressed by the planning staff was that that's not adequate stacking, the thirteen car actually is blocking the driveway, it's going to have an issue with cars entering and exiting the plaza. Two or three more cars on an occasion, that would quickly spill back into Adams Street. So that's, that was the very early plan that we looked at. Again, the concern was the potential for queue spillback onto Adams Street from the drive-through window. And then the plan that you have now, that shows the employee parking lot with the drive-through queue of thirteen cars, that's the theoretical maximum that we're designing for, plus an additional seven cars or so that can be accommodated on the plaza, and of course, all the parking that we have within the plaza for people to choose to just park and walk into the store. So the queue is entirely contained within the plaza. The employee parking lot, this lot is restricted, implies only to minimize the interaction between the drive-through queue and the cars pulling in and out of those spaces. And another critical component of the design, this, there's only one lane coming out. So if there is a car waiting to turn left at this intersection, at the driveway, and they're waiting for a gap to make a left turn, you're going to get stuck behind that waiting gap. So the design is to modify the driveway, you can actually see that the driveway geometry is being modified to create separate right turn, left turn lanes, so that when you do have a few cars that need to make that left turn, you have a separate right turn pocket that would help vehicles leave the site without causing unnecessary backup to the property, all at the same time keeping operations here at a stop control intersection. So in terms of parking, again, I do want to mention, I mentioned that we'll be losing approximately thirteen parking spaces within the plaza as part of this plan. We looked at- We looked at operations, uh, currently as it stands today with the Dunkin' Donuts and then with future conditions with the drive-through. The peak parking demand for this plaza is about eighty to eighty-five cars. The total existing is one hundred and twenty-nine spaces, and with these changes, it'll be about one hundred and sixteen spaces. So we expect that it'll be more than adequate parking. In fact, during that morning peak time, which is really the peak time for Dunkin' Donuts, the parking demanded in this plaza with Dunkin' Donuts in operation is somewhere in the order of about fifty to sixty cars. So during that peak time in the morning, you only get, I think, about sixty cars in the plaza, if you're in that Saturday midday peak conditions when you get into those eighty, eighty-five, ninety cars within the plaza. So that is a quick overview of the traffic study. I know there's, there's a lot of information in the study and what they presented just now, uh, and this has a site showing what, what was submitted as part of the package. If there's anything specific that, that you would like to ask or clarify, thank you. Thank you.
Is there, uh, car access for the employees to get into that site?
Uh, no, there'll be signs posted right here that says employee parking only, and then it'll be monitored by the plaza to ensure that, that non-employee vehicles would not be parked in there, but there would be no car access for, for this lot. And again, that becomes an issue primarily during that morning peak time for an hour maybe, seven to eight AM. At seven in the evening, you know, you're probably not going to experience those thirteen car queues, so you may have one or two cars that are trying to get through. When you look at some of the data that's in the center, the evening peak queues are no more than four cars. So even at Franklin Street and Center Street, so you're not going to have an issue with parking in, in this lot during other times.
Any other questions?
Deliveries to those three stores. How do you handle with a nice piece of green brass jacket? You know, the Dunkin' Donuts truck pulls in, right, right in front of that store going in the front door?
So the deliveries were at, they're right here within this, right, right shop?
Because I used to run a shop like, like that at home.
There's, that's a, that's pretty, the deliveries are dealt with prior to working hours of other, other facilities, and, and I believe that that's how the deliveries had been done even previous to this.
But the chest of money was that they used that, well, it's not the employee parking lot to put their trucks, and I assume they have backdoors.
They, they roll in.
Because you don't want the doors falling on your customers.
Not sure on deliveries. I, I thought deliveries, I thought we were advised that deliveries were actually made at the front entrance of that store. I'm not sure who did that, deliveries. Were they backdoor deliveries?
No, they were not.
They were done at the front.
Really?
Same, same ways will be done today. The, the question, though, I guess, is, is would the truck have, would the trucking lot empty, would it, would it have the facility to enter into that side?
Right, those stores? You don't even know the tenant is.
We go in the front.
Is it Volkregio?
Well, Volkregio has a back. So we don't even know, we don't even know that the tenant is. It says tenant. I don't know who did this kind of thing.
It was, that was formerly a UPS store. I believe that. I believe that the tenant, uh, to be a place, I don't know if that's public knowledge at this stage.
It's going to be a...
Speak up, please.
Sure. The question was asked about the tenant in the build, in the, in the other unit where the UPS store formerly occupied?
We can really, well, it's, uh, came to, um, like a...
Well, you know, it doesn't really matter because, because it's a, you know, five-year lease, ten-year lease, it's a lot of people there.
Right, it was, it would like to be a retail type tenant.
But, so the point is, uh, just surprised that, that there's no, uh, delivery place. No backdoor.
So it wasn't from the existing facility, there, there were limitations on the rebuilds that were provided because it was a non-conformity building, it had to be rebuilt as, as it stood prior to the, uh, to the, to the collapse, and that's why they were, they were limited in having to rebuild it as, as it was done.
Okay, that's my question. Any other questions?
I have a couple of...
Mr. Ryan.
The, the pocket, the left-hand pocket on Adams Street, as you can tell, how many, how many cars stack in there?
Uh, so the available storage is, is prob, I mean, it, it does come all the way down to the median, I would say it probably can store about, uh, four to five cars, correct? In the area, and you, actually, that stacking is actually used by both Adams Plaza and, and the bank.
Got a question.
It's, it's, it extends past the bank driveway.
Okay. Now, with the build-out and the, and the installation of the drive-up, did you, um, how mu, how much of that traffic would go left on Adams Street at peak times coming out of the plaza?
Again, the split, so Dunkin' Donuts traffic, as you can imagine, is primarily driven by pass-by traffic, right? I mean, if you're, majority of, obviously, there are some people who may want to just go to the Dunkin' Donuts and go back home. But majority of the traffic is people on their way to work in the morning who are fully in the plaza, so if they're heading towards ninety-three coming from the signal, you'll turn in, pick up a coffee, and then you would make a left turn and head out. When you look at the data that's presented, uh, in the, in the traffic study, I believe it's about a forty-sixty split, forty percent oriented towards the right and about sixty percent oriented to the left.
Peak in the morning?
During the morning. For overall plaza traffic, I mean, again, it's not just, uh, you know, there's cer, at a certain point, Walgreens opens up, so there is some occupancy related traffic mixed in there. We wouldn't be able to distinguish, uh, you know, a Walgreens car from a Dunkin' Donuts walk-in vehicle before the collapse of that drive-through. Then it's about a forty to sixty percent split.
One, one more question. The, uh, will all, all employees from all the stores in there be allowed to park in the, in the parking lot, or is it just the three that you built?
Uh, the operational arrangement for those eighteen spaces is, is yet to be defined. It will be employee parking only, and how that will be divided between employees of this plaza, we, we have yet to figure that out, this, the mechanics of, of that arrangement needs to be worked out. The intent is to make sure that it's low turnover, so you don't have cars pulling in and out frequently out of those spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have to read my question, but I have, how many employees are there in the plaza generally speaking altogether?
I, I wouldn't know. So our analysis, again, the future conditions is based on, uh, Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is a national standard that reviews, yes, the number of vehicle trips. So the vehicle trips, it's the total number of vehicles that we would account for, we don't distinguish between employee vehicles and, uh, customer vehicles for the purpose of analysis capacity analysis. Just for parking, it, it has been...
You hear what I'm saying? It's like eighteen, right here, or you can't hear, so how many employees there are?
But there's, but the, the remaining parking lot is also available to them. The goal is just to limit that to employees only to avoid the turnover.
But it's not that there'll be only eighteen employee parking places, that's, that's not the intent.
Have you addressed the concern about the westbound traffic in the morning taking that left, uh, across eastbound traffic into Dunkin' Donuts in the morning, you know, across, you know, the traffic against, uh, or like the, in the queue within the pocket?
Right, so when you, yes, so when you look at the data, you will see that there's actually, uh, queuing analysis that, that shows how often the, the eastbound queue blocks the driveway during the morning rush hours, how often it blocks the driveway during the evening rush hours. So that is part of the analysis, you do have the data. Again, the, the metric here, the comparison is with and without a Dunkin' Donuts. It's not about whether or not a Dunkin' Donuts can go in there. So when you look at a Dunkin' Donuts with drive-through, the primary reason for the drive-through is a convenience plan. So when you look at operations of Dunkin' Donuts before and after a store, uh, puts in a drive-through, you see that a certain percentage of the walk-in customers will switch to the drive-through for convenience. And then once that queue gets to a certain level, thirteen, fourteen cars, then they'll continue to do what they're doing before the drive-through ends. So it's not necessarily that, it's not necessary that adding a drive-through automatically causes a huge bump in traffic. There could be an attraction factor associated with it, and we have concrete provided with an increasing traffic flow for analysis purposes. But the primary shift you would see with the drive-through is that some of the walk-in customers will in the future be in the drive-through. So that's, that's really the change that you will see, not as much on Adams Street.
And the only other point that I was going to raise as well is that this, although this, uh, site doesn't benefit for a light out front in the, in the drive, it does benefit from a light on Furnishbrook Parkway, which is a very close distance to that, which causes the stoppage of traffic that allows break into traffic for cars to exit into the plaza. And that happens at a regular basis. I mean, Furnishbrook is relatively busy in this section, certainly in the morning hours with the school in session, because there is a regular stoppage that allows vehicles to exit.
In the westbound side of Adams Street, why not, to a company, make their life in the...
It is tried for that, and in fact, again, when you look at some of the data in there, which I was actually surprised, but then when you look at the regional network with ninety-three located to the top of the screen, the majority of the queues and the blocking of the driveway you observe is, is during the evening time when people are coming back home. Obviously, there are queues in the morning as well when people are getting these, but a lot of the traffic in the morning is headed towards ninety-three. So the time when you see this blockage the most, when you look at the data, and it happens quite frequently, is during the afternoon or the evening rush hour, which is, you know, sometimes between four-thirty, five-thirty, five to six thirty. That's when you see the queuing issues the most.
Mr.? I was trying to, uh, follow on with some of the traffic study, uh, numbers that are in here. What, because you studied this bond one, when these three storefronts are currently closed, what percentage increase have you attributed towards not only Dunkin' Donuts opening, but also the other two storefronts open?
So again, I mentioned the Institute of Transportation, and the entire plaza, it's a twenty-four thousand, uh, plus square feet of, of, uh, weekends on the plaza currently with, uh, with the Dunkin' Donuts direct drive-through. So there are national statistics that you can use to estimate the volume of traffic that at twenty-four thousand square foot plaza excluding the drive, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts. So that would be about, let's say, twenty-three thousand, twenty-two thousand something. You can estimate the total traffic for that. So we would put that in the future and reduce without the drive-through. So there is an estimated traffic count associated with the, with the vacant portion of the plaza that's not in operation today, and that's part of the standard analysis, uh, and that's based on national statistics.
So then what percentage do you attribute to an inter, increase based on a drive-through versus not having a drive-through?
So when you look, again, this is, when you look at those national statistics, drive, a Dunkin' Donuts or a coffee shop with a drive-through is the land use that's defined in these national statistics, and obviously that Dunkin' Donuts would fit that criteria. When you look at the data before or with or without drive-through, you'll see that the numbers are not much different. So what we did...
But not much, what, what is there associated with that?
Just a few cars, it's a few additional trips, I mean, I would say less than ten trips different between, with any of our drive-through. But right for analysis purposes, what we did, again, this is based on historically what we have done with drive-through analysis, is assume a fifteen percent bump in traffic.
So that's what I was trying to figure with that fifteen?
So there's a fifteen percent bump. And again, if you look at the national statistics, it will say that it's much lower than that, almost bordering on less than one percent, but we use a fifteen percent to make sure that our design is conservative enough that the queues don't spill back on that.
So based on these, the fifteen national trips per hour, is that what this, this data shows? I mean, it's, it's very vague. It said weekday morning, enter and exit, you said you have that Dunkin' Donuts will contribute sixty-six trips on a weekday morning. I'm wondering if that per ten minutes, so...
So when you look at, uh, yeah, when you look at table three, so, when you look at the table three, the, the Nobel, what you call as the Nobel traffic condition, where, so you would have a total of sixty-seven vehicle trips in and out during that peak time, okay? And then with the drive-through...
Right, that's a peak hour.
Then with the drive-through, with the fifteen percent bump and, uh, you know, the assumed fifteen percent increase, that would go up to ninety-seven trips. This represents an increase of thirty vehicle trips. Again, I would say that that's a conservatively worst case, it's twenty-four and three, fifteen percent, but to use that for analysis purposes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is, that is the applicant's presentation. We're certainly here to answer any other questions that may arise.
Sure. We'll get to that one. If anyone here that wants to speak in favor, speak in favor. First call, second call, third call closed. Our sponsor, lady here from D W, she's on board of field, eighteen-fourteen, thousand sixteen, by fifty Adams Street, case number sixteen oh three eight. We reviewed the supplemental and they've got referenced project, our comments are as follows. The operation and maintenance plan of the drainage system should be submitted to review and recorded upon our county registered deeds. Plan should include financial responsibilities for the maintenance work to whom will we be vested. Two, the drainage system should be cleaned and checked for integrity. Three, the traffic volume will be increased through proposed development, we repress the existing catch basin, we upgrade with four-foot sub- and groundwater recharge capacity. Further, please advise. If there are anyone here opposed or undecided, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. If anyone else wants to speak, please come up and stand in line. You don't have to wait for people to come from the audience. Before, please. Stand right up here, name and address, that's fine.
Hello, Dan Gillis, nine thirty-four Furnishbrook Parkway. From my, uh, lived, uh, family room, I can look straight across and see where the parking area is going to be in the morning. I have, uh, five main concerns. First, obviously, traffic. Seven, six thirty to probably eight o'clock, Adams Street is backed up almost from East Milton Square to Furnishbrook Parkway. I mean, it's pretty steady, it's very frustrating trying to drive low in the morning, adding more cars to that, I don't feel we'll help. Uh, second thing is noise. I don't know where the border window's going to be, but it's going to have to be awfully close to those apartments. I don't know if there's anybody living in those apartments here tonight, but it's not that far from us either. And I don't appreciate waking up at five-thirty in the morning, somebody screaming about how they want their coffee. Uh, third thing, traffic. I don't know what it is about people driving in cars, but they seem to be more willing to toss stuff out the windows. Related to that is pollution. He's talking about thirteen to sixteen cars waiting in a queue idling. That can't be good for our health. Last point, I don't know if it's on this plan, but currently, well, currently it's blocked off, but there was a cut through from the apartments to get into that parking lot. Uh, and based on having a drive-through there, I don't see how you could do that for safety reasons, but that was kind of a benefit to the neighbors who have to deal with this retail development. You could walk through, you know, I, I like Dunkin' Donuts, I go there, I'd probably go there anyway, but to be able to walk through there and that parking lot, there wasn't many cars, so you could feel safe getting across there and then walking on the sidewalk. There's a dance studio there, lots of little kids coming and going. They also do music. My son is able to walk across the street with his guitar and go to that dance studio, but now we have to drive him around. It's crazy. So I, I think in this day and age, we shouldn't be encouraging more cars and more traffic. That is a nice little development there. Uh, before the roof collapse, piece of place was building an outdoor patio. A lot of teenagers were going there eating. That would have been a real nice thing that they could watch it. Now, it's just going to be all cars and all traffic. Really sorry that they're trying to do this.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. This is your letter that you sent to Brian, I'm going to give it to you, we don't have to read it into the record, so you just go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Carol Dumas, sixty-nine Common Street. I've lived at sixty-nine Common Street since nineteen ninety-one. I have been in that plaza many times. My three daughters have worked with Walgreens and Dunkin' Donuts, and I just texted my older daughter, and she recalled getting deliveries through the back door, so, I don't know. Um, I have to agree with the amount of traffic, any Dunkin' Donuts is going to draw traffic. Common Street is a cut-through street. It's horrendous. I have a half-acre lot with a beautiful backyard, and I can't sit out there in the evening because of the traffic. There's going to be a huge development opening on Corey Street. It will draw more traffic down there. I just see disaster, but this is a lot to happen. The parking, I don't know when they... The parking, I don't know when they did their parking lot study, but when the dance studio was open in the winter, there's cars parked all over the place, along all the curves, little kids running all over the place, it's not safe. So I hope you turn this down. I think it was a wonderful little Dunkin' Donuts, I went there many times. There's no problem with parking and going in. Between the bike lane and that left turn lane is a joke. It's used as a raceway to cut people off. Nobody honors that. And how are you going to stop people from parking in a monitored employee parking lot? You can't give them tickets. They park where they want now. They will not honor that. We live in Massachusetts. I see. I can see where, all you have to do is look at that drive-through up on where the canyon is, between the light, it's impossible. So thank you for holding this hearing, and I hope you turn this down.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next.
Yes, my name is Anthony Fowler, and this is the neighborhood meeting, which we did not yet. I, there'd be progress to be quickly behind what is now the building. There, love has been said for, everything has been said by the previous people that came up here is exactly right. We have a hill coming down. You cannot see traffic, other car coming, until it gets down the hill. If they're going fast, there's gonna be an accident. That is my perspective. A left-hand turn should never be considered for something like this, it's just too dangerous. You'd have to put a light there, and that means money. Also, all this green we see on the picture, being there, there are deliveries at all times of the day. Frequently twenty-foot box trucks, tanker trucks to take used oil, garbage trucks, many times. And they have to back in, back behind a building, and then pull out. How a Dunkin' Donuts truck is going to get in there? And they use big tractor-trailers? Now, I don't know. I think that's kind of ill-conceived. The eatress that we have has given that place a lot of business. And I can't see out, you know, they can even block it off because it's been there quite a while. And knowing a little bit about something like that, you know, there's a right to keep it open. But I, you know, I think it's, the whole thing is kind of ill-conceived, and it's not about convenience, because I know Dunkin' Donuts, it's about money. You get too many cars coming in, and you have a backup, people are waiting. That's anything, but it brings in the money, and that's why every Dunkin' Donuts would like one. And I hear this from people who own the Dunkin' Donuts. I'm personally friends with the people that own the Franklin Street. I used to use the Center Street, it was a delivery business at one time. But, you know, some things just didn't jive. I'd say this is ill-conceived, it's a bad idea.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Debbie Napst, I live at sixteen Common Street-
What is your last name?
Napst, maybe S T E D T, two streets away from me. That's a walk-in route to an elementary school and a middle school, and high school, they walk that. That is, it's dangerous, the cars don't stop. There are two crossing guards there, on one of them, I have the big intersection. I have a picture on my phone, at seven twenty in the morning, traffic is backed up from that intersection all the way into East Milton Square, taking a left down that side. That left-hand lane is, they use that as a passing lane to cut the car off in the right-hand lane if that car is doing a speed limit. The sidewalk on the right-hand side, the kids have to walk single file because it is not big enough for a parent who will be in the carriage and have the child walk next to it. And the parents have to put the kids on the inside, single file, because that's how close those cars come, it's almost taking our children on the sidewalk. They don't stop to the crossing guard at the top of all regret. It's a horror show. Adam Street is now a two-lane road. They may get two lanes, but the lane is going straight into East Milton Square, and the cars that want to pay go right. And cars who don't want to sit in the long路traffic to go straight, they go into our right-hand lane, and they cut off all the cars. There's multiple accidents on Adam Street in the morning. It's just, it's not worth it. I think all we shot it down before because we didn't want it, it's too dangerous, the kids cross there to go to school. I mean, there's a lot of, and you're gonna put a crossing guard there so the kids get across that safely in the morning? I mean, who's gonna pay for that? We don't need a light there, they, you know, you can't take a left turn there, you can't get out of there. The parking lots are fast when it's there, there's a ton of cars in that parking lot. Kids are running everywhere, there's a cut-through for the apartment building, kids cut through there to get to school from the apartment buildings, they cut through and they walk along to the sidewalk. The cars don't stop, there's no sign, you know, they're walking on the grass to get down to us, or walking up, tearing up the cross up there. So please, we don't want it, hopefully for the safety of the kids, I mean, we don't think of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next.
Evening, my name's Kevin, last bail out of twenty-five Cliff Street, just a block or two up from my neighbor just now, less than a quarter mile from here. I won't bore you by repeating everything else that's just been said, I will simply say that everything they said goes just as much for me. Every day on my way to work, I go through East Milton Square, and making a left onto Adam Street is difficult at best, because just like, just like you just heard, it is frequently two, two, two cars wide as you go along. It's not meant to be, but Adam Street is that wide, people use it, it's there. You know, the famous quote from the movie, "If you build it, they will come," which is precisely what I know you gentlemen are hoping for. And I know that these are probably conservative estimates you're hoping for this project, you know, for the number, for the amount of traffic that you're hoping to bring in, and you would be ecstatic if more came in and made for a very successful business. And that's what capitalism is all about, and that's fantastic, except that's not, aside from all the traffic and safety concerns, frankly, as my first neighbor said, I don't think we need another reason to not get out of our cars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else?
My name is Jim Napst, I live at sixteen Common Street. I'm not opposed to Dunkin' Donuts, I'm actually happy to save them back. When it, when the roof caved in last year, there was a noticeable difference in the traffic in and out afterwards. Dunkin' Donuts, it's a lot of people in the hundred every day. Now, traffic counts were done after the collapse, so it didn't include any of the traffic, isn't it? Now, I'm not even opposed to the drive-thru necessarily, but I think it's the wrong time for it. Let the businesses move in, then do some newer traffic count for real numbers instead of projections, and then review that issue. And we'll see what it looks like at a later date when we have some more reliable numbers. I just think we're getting ahead of ourselves here at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Napst. Second call, opposed or undecided? Third call, call it out of here and close. And I have a letter here, a bunch of letters that I have to put in that are opposed, and I'll just write, read their names, run it through you with all the information that everyone talked about tonight, they said the same thing. This is from Calmucci, thinks it's a bad idea. And I got a, that was a note, and then I have a letter here. Matters of government policy, I find inadmirable. Opinion is to be rare, as a dancing unicorn. However, in this matter, I have heard no one beyond the applicant that believes the community would be better improved with a drive-thru, and he goes on and on, he's not gonna say it. There's a letter here from Mr. Clark received. Denise Downing, opposed. Brenda Chin, opposed. Jessica King, opposed. Barbara Linda Pritchett, opposed. These are people that live right near there and walk there and want Dunkin' Donuts, but don't want a drive-thru, so these letters. And this here is from Susan Dolan and Gregory Dolan, my firm's book.
Thank you.
From Kim Tran, worried about the kids, shouldn't have it. Sarah Phillips, not want a drive-thru. All that, the hearing closed. Personally, I love going Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-thru. Probably be doing something in my car except for bar and coffee, making phone calls and doing other stuff. But the way I look at that, the way I look at that whole traffic up there, I think it's a bad idea, Mr. Clark. I just, not because we knew what they said. I went up there and looked, I went up there in the morning, I'm out there, you know, and I just watched that traffic die, and I just think it's not a good place to drive right now at all, at all. I can't even picture people coming out and taking a bus to the end and right, so I'll be voting no on that. May I ask any comments?
Still not really satisfied about this whole delivery thing. You know, it's done in the front, I don't like it, but it's already there. It's done in the back, it's really disappeared with, you know, that little green space that was in the corner standing there. I'll be voting no.
Mr. O'Brien, any comments?
Yes, looking at this, I prefer to see it built up first, to see where the Walgreens are. I have a realistic traffic study at that time, especially that left queue one to half to peak hours. I mean, we could suppose that it might be a little freak out, but I'd like to see actual numbers, maybe it's a little bit.
Chin?
I'm opposed, well, I'm concerned about the traffic on Avenue Street, concerned about the left turn or right turn, it's a little bit wrong. So at this point in time, I'm not opposed on this.
Mr. Chairman? What we usually do is I'll give you a chance and we'll draw this petition if you'd like, anything comes back to us, if there'd be a major change.
I have two seconds, Al.
You got two seconds. Time's up.
I would just ask the board to vote on the matter. You know, I guess my only, my only comment, Mr. Chairman, and I hear the board's concern. I think it's important, however, that the board distinguishes existing traffic from new traffic. And I think the numbers, as we discussed with Mr. Dell, indicated that there's, we're not talking about a significant increase in traffic. The reality is that Dunkin' Donuts can and will go back there. The issue is the, does the drive-thru create a hazard that's not existing now?
Yeah, it's a little hazard.
Well, based on the traffic numbers, based on the, the traffic number's done by a professional traffic agent, and that's not the case. That would be the only thing I would consider. And I heard Mr. O'Brien's comments about, you know, coming up and providing more accurate numbers, if, you know, and I think, I can't remember, one of the other members, maybe Mr. Dell indicated that as well, that having tenants in place and then considering the traffic. Because I dealt with this issue on a number of occasions, not only with this body, but with the city council as well. Traffic is a very sensitive, tough topic when basing decisions on traffic, because the boards oftentimes base their decisions on existing traffic problems, and it's really important that the board not do so here, that the denial be based on the increase. And I haven't heard that last one tonight, and that's my only concern.
And I'll let you know, there's two things that I got a reason for not. One is all those apartment buildings there are being queued up for two or three hours and right in front of their door. I don't think that's a good thing. And two, the traffic there is horrendous now, and the drive-thru is just not, we don't need to increase fifteen percent in that parking lot during the peak hours, that's my thing. Now, we've been written as such. Thank you, Counselor. And I have a motion to deny, please.
In matter number sixteen dash zero three eight, New Creek LLC, for a special permit variance to instruct a drive-through window to serve Dunkin' Donuts business on the premises number five five zero, out of Duplessis, I make a motion to deny special permit variance.
Second? On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Let's take five minutes, if we can.